Good afternoon, everyone. I thank all of you for being here today. Today is June first, two thousand twenty-one. It's approximately six oh three. We want to go ahead and call this meeting to order tonight. Uh, we're here for our budget workshop. We're gonna ask, tonight we're gonna open up, we're gonna ask Commissioner Edwards, if you would, lead us in prayer. We're gonna ask Commissioner Sanders, if you would, to lead us in our prayers.
Let us pray. Dear Lord and heavenly Father above, we thank you for another day. We thank you for the opportunity to come together and do the business of the county. We ask this time that you would give us strength, wisdom, and discernment. We ask all these things in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I want to turn it over now to our county manager, Mr. Lloyd Kerr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'd like to take just a minute before we begin to, uh, thank all of the department heads and all of the elected officials who have taken part in putting together this, uh, this, uh, proposed budget for FY twenty-two. And I particularly like to thank Brittany and her staff, um, and in particular Brittany, who has done so much work on this, uh, budget, uh, for this year and in putting together, um, utilizing some new software, uh, that we have, uh, purchased and in putting together this presentation, which is, um, very easy to look at and also is very user-friendly. This is an interactive, comes from an interactive software that we have, uh, in our, uh, on our website. And, um, I think it'll make it a lot easier for the, the public to see. But, um, thanks to all who have worked very hard on this and, um, in making this a, a budget that I think is, is a very workable budget. Um, in general, our, uh, proposed budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two for the general fund is seventy-eight million one hundred twenty-eight thousand one hundred forty-two dollars and, which is a two-and-a-half percent increase over FY twenty-one. And the total budget, which includes general fund and all of our other sources of revenue and all of the other funds, is one hundred nineteen million seven hundred seventy-three thousand nine hundred sixty-one dollars, which is only a one-point-six percent increase over the total budget for FY two thousand twenty-one. And with that, I would like to turn it over, uh, to, uh, Brittany White, our finance director, to go through this budget summary with you.
Thank you, sir.
Are y'all screens working pretty? Can y'all see? No? Okay. Let's move right up. Okay, so the plan is to go over the digital budget book off the website. So it's on that screen up there. But I also took, um, the all-funds summaries and then the general fund detail and printed them out, just in case your screens didn't work. Um, so those are the two main parts of the budget we're gonna hit on tonight. So if you have questions about what page number, I can try to look on this page, um, on the printed book, and then we'll try to work through all of it there. Yeah, so the whole book is right around twelve-hundred pages. That includes this introduction, the history of the county, the fund structure. So, um, as a user, if you take the time to go over the introduction section, that's really gonna explain a lot about the way governmental finance works, the way budgeting works, the way our fund structure works. So I really encourage everyone to take some time and read through that, because that's really gonna help you to understand the way this budget is built. So one thing I wanted to point out here was the fund structure. So this explains the types of governmental funds, but then we also have this chart down here that is specific to Newton County. So you'll see we have governmental funds, proprietary funds, and fiduciary funds. So in those, you have, um, the governmental funds, that's where pretty much everything we do, with the exception of the enterprise funds, are held. So that's our general fund, our special revenue funds, our debt service fund, and our capital fund. Proprietary funds, we have in enterprise funds, which are water, solid waste, and gaiters. And then we have one internal service fund, which is workers' compensation. The agency funds are, they're in a different color, because down here in this legend that explains it to you, these are generally just funds that money comes in, money goes out. So there's really no need to budget for those funds. So that, um, and then up top, there's an explanation of that. So I just wanted to point out this introduction section, because I think there's a lot of good information in there. We'll start with our personnel changes. So these are the person, the proposed personnel changes for FY twenty-two. Some of these are additional positions, some of them are reevaluations. In this action column, it explains. So we have one position for the BOC, for grant writer. We have one position for the tax commissioner, that's the tax assistant. We have one position for information services, which is a micro system specialist. We have one position for elections, which is an administrative technician. The four positions you see here for senior services are all reevaluations. So these are just going from part-time positions to full-time positions. The magistrate court is also a reevaluation of the part-time magistrate judge. The GIS are the two interns. The public works, there's one, two, six equipment operators, and those, um, are to assist for the trash pickup. The two district attorney positions are also reevaluations, so those are not new positions. Um, the fire services, there is sixteen new positions to help fund or staff Station Four, and these would not be hired on until the first of January, two thousand twenty-two. And then there's four positions.
Oh, Commissioner Henderson. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Um, thank you, Brittany. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Um, you said those are for Station Four, but what about eight? Eight, eight is closer to being done than four, right?
Right, and most of the personnel that we need for eight have already, uh, been hired. They're in training. Um, some of them are still going through some of their training, uh, but I think we've got most of the people there that we need for eight.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you.
So the salary that you're seeing there under fire services, that's for a half-of-a-year salary. And then development services, four positions there. A code enforcement officer, development inspector, a zip one, and a planning tech. So that total comes out to one-point-three, um, for contingency positions. So these, um, the money for these positions is not directly put into the department budget. It is transferred into the department once the changes are made. Okay, so now Lloyd.
I didn't know if we were taking questions in between. I didn't want to stop you in the midst. I noticed that for the, um, BOC position in the preliminary budget, we proposed two positions, and I'm seeing one now that is on there. So is that the position that's already been hired, the P? I don't know what the acronym stands for, the PIO? Because...
That contingency spreadsheet, are you looking at the one for two thousand twenty-one or two thousand twenty-two?
No, when we had the preliminary budget, if you, um, if you go back to some of the videos in the workshop, there was two positions that were being proposed. It was the grant writer and the PIO. But I know we just recently hired the PIO. So what fund did that come out of, since it was in the budget?
The PIO position, um, has already been hired, and actually, it was budgeted for FY twenty-one.
Okay.
And I think what happened there is we were discussing the PIO, the, um, uh, that PIO position at the same time we were discussing this, but it was actually funded in this FY twenty-one budget. And that's, um, James Tucker, who is running the, uh, board up there for us.
Hi, James. They're asking what PIO means. I was asking the question.
I'm sorry, Public Information Officer.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Commissioner Henderson.
Well, who, who, who have been asking as the, uh, Public Information Officer? Or is it the same person? Okay, so we just somewhat, I guess, promoted or changed the title or what?
Lloyd, you want, you want to make clarifications on Brian and Mr. Tucker's position?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Would you want to make some clarifications on Mr. Tucker's, uh, position?
Um, yeah, um, what, um, James will be doing is assisting Brian primarily...
The title?
Oh, yeah, and I'm getting to that. And that's, Brian is the head of the PIO department, if you will. Um, James is specifically working on video, will be working with video productions, and also assisting Brian with any of the, uh, with things like press releases and as well. But he has a extensive background in, uh, video production work, um, and so he's bringing that to the table, and that's part of what we really need to dress up our, um, the presence on social media, YouTube, and on Facebook.
Thank you.
Okay, Lloyd briefly touched on the all-funds, but we'll just dive back into that here on the big screen. So the overall total budget encompasses all the funds of the county. So all the funds of the county, the budget is nine, one hundred and nineteen-point-seven million dollars, which is, um, oh, this is page four of your, your hard copy book. So last year, the budget for all funds was one hundred and seventeen-point-three million. So that is an increase of right around two million. So this shows the county revenue by fund. So general fund encompasses sixty-five percent of the whole county budget. The next largest budget would be the two thousand seventeen SPOSS. This year, that could change depending on where we're at in the SPOSS. What we're kind of getting, we're gearing up to be in the position of this SPOSS, where we've collected a lot of funds and we're able to start utilizing those. The next largest fund in the county is the water fund. Then you come into the solid waste fund at five-point-eight percent. And the E-nine-one-one fund is at two percent. And then all the other funds are pretty small, so that includes the fire, well, the fire district's two-point-three. But then after that, you've got capital improvements and one-point-seven, our grant fund at one-point-four, and then all the other funds are under one percent of the county budget. And these graphs are inter, I don't know if y'all can see these on your screen, but these graphs are interactive, so when you click on them, it, it shows you percentages and numbers, because I'll scroll up here. You can see numbers when you click on these graphs. So they're, they're pretty interactive. The budget book also has spreadsheet breakdowns, so depending on what view you like to look at, they're both gonna be the same information, just depends on, um, personal preference here. So as Lloyd mentioned earlier, the general fund total budget is seventy-eight-point-one million dollars, which is a two-and-a-half percent increase from last year. Our LVAP, which is a special revenue fund, is sixty thousand is the proposed budget for that. The juvenile supplemental services budget, the proposed budget for that is six thousand forty-five. The total for the sheriff's forfeited funds are fifteen thousand ten dollars. The total for law library is two thousand dollars. The total for the sheriff's special revenue fund is five thousand. The total for the jail fund is two hundred and fifteen thousand. The total for the date fund is ninety thousand one fifty. The real estate grant clerk fund is ten thousand. The district crime victims, this one's based off, um, grant revenues, and so we budgeted zero this year, because we don't intend, we're not intending for any right now. The E-nine-one-one fund is three-point-one million. The NSP fund is three thousand fifty. Our total multiple grants, so pretty much all the grants that come through the county flow through the multiple grant fund, so the budget for that this year is one-point-six million. Our fire district fund, which is the special fire district tax that is on the tax bills, that is two-point-six million this year. Our capital improvement fund, the budget for that is, um, two million this year. The FEMA, we really don't budget for FEMA, because we, we don't really budget for national, um, natural disasters, so we just do budget, and then it's as needed for that fund. So that's zero right now. We budgeted twelve million for the SPOSS two thousand seventeen. Um, nothing for the two thousand eleven SPOSS, since it's fully collected. The impact fee funds, one million. Our debt, total debt service fund is fifteen thousand eight-six forty-five. Our total for solid waste this year is six-point-eight. The water fund is ten million. And the total for gaiters this year, which includes gaiters and factory shoals, so that totals for both is two ninety-one. So that brings you to the one nineteen million. So one, another thing I'll point out here is under the fund summaries, if you go to these individually, so we'll just click on the LVAP, there is a fund summary at the beginning, and that, that goes over exactly what the fund is, where the funding comes from. So a lot of these are funded by, um, OCGAs through this, that are, the state mandates the way that we can spend those funds. So if that is the case, it'll explain it here. And then each of these have a more in-depth budget, if you dive into them. Those are not in your books, because like I said, I was trying to minimize the number of pages, because I know y'all don't want to look at twelve-hundred pages tonight. Um, but you can dive into all that here on this digital book.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Brittany, you were talking about the, uh, total capital improvement funds are two million, uh, for FY two thousand twenty-two. Have we by any chance identified any project thus far that that two million would be going towards?
So tonight, on the regular BOC meeting, there's an agenda item for a capital transfer. So most of those projects there are gonna be in that budget transfer. That's gonna be on the seven o'clock meeting. So if you've seen the backup to that, that two million comes from that total.
So what we, what we're gonna see, well, I mean, I've already seen it, but what we're gonna see at seven o'clock, that's gonna equate to the two million?
Yes, the budget transfer that you'll see at seven tonight's around two-point-six, but I just budgeted two million, because I didn't intend for all the projects to probably happen within a year. So I estimated two million, and then some of that will obviously carry forward if it doesn't, if it's not completed within the next year.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, C. Um, you were saying that the, uh, budget for, uh, for gaiters and factory shoals were put together. I mean, all these funds, all the funds was kind of bundled, bundled together. And, and my memory serving right, I think we had talked so much about, um, gaiters and having a funded budget from the county, uh, for the general fund, about two hundred thousand dollars. So how much is factory shoals being funded? And, uh, and I'm guessing I'm asking, because I don't know. Uh, what are we funding, uh, factory shoals for? Do we still have a personnel there, or am I controlling it, or is that what?
So up here on the screen, I have the fund detail for the gaiters and factory shoals fund. It's probably, this is not, the detail for this is not in the book I printed for you tonight, but up here on the screen. Let me scroll down. So the, in the revenue section is where you're gonna see the transfer in from the general fund. So that, um, let me actually get onto the detail down here. Okay. So under the factory shoals department, the operating transfer in from the general fund is a hundred thousand dollars. That's factory shoals. Then we will scroll down here to gaiters, and the operating transfer in from the general fund is one forty-one, three thirty-four. So that, um, between the two of those, you're looking at two, around two forty.
And thank you. Okay, so I guess maybe to Lloyd, what are we spending money over, factory shoals and what? There are no, few, man, there are some, um, people who kind of still there, and I guess, and I won't say tents, but in, um, you know, still there. So what, what, what are we dedicating funds kind of for, for over there for factory shoals?
Yeah, we have to do regular maintenance, maintenance over there. We do have the campground, um, that has to be regularly maintained. Uh, there's a boardwalk that goes, uh, down next to the river and a little ways, uh, up into the hillsides, and that has to be maintained. Um, there is a, a house there, too, that we have to do some maintenance on, a parking lot to trash pick up and that kind of thing. Also, trash pick up in the, along the, the river, um, and that sort of thing. We do have an employee there who takes care of all of that. Um, and that's the biggest part of the expense, is that employee's salary and benefits.
So if you, if you, we so kind, Commissioner, how much are we paying the employee? And are we getting any money from the people who are at, though, at the tent site?
Um, we're paying the employee forty, it looks like total, um, there is, um, let's see, we're paying him forty-four thousand in salary. Um, and it looks like, I might have to do some quick math in my head, um, twenty-two, sixty, looks like the total is round, round about seventy, seventy thousand or so, seventy-one thousand total, um, salary and benefit.
Right.
Um, and then, um...
So...
I'm sorry, Commissioner, what was the other question you had? What are, oh, the fees from the campsite.
Right.
Uh, we do collect fees. Um, there are, I think we charge fifteen dollars a night. Um, do we have, would you, those are the, do you have a fee? Okay, the activity fee there is, looks like we budgeted it five thousand. Um, last couple of years, it looks like they've collected a little over three thousand. Three thousand, thirty-nine hundred dollars in, looks like two thousand nineteen, uh, FY nineteen, and then FY twenty, it was thirty-one hundred. Um, and then FY twenty-one, we haven't, obviously, we haven't finished the year out. Um, FY twenty is, I would think, would be lower than that because of all of the COVID, uh, activity that's been going on, so...
How, how many people is at the campsite? I, I'm sorry, I, I don't know what I'm asking.
Yeah, no problem. Um, I believe that we have either eight or ten campsites, and it's primitive camping, it's tent campsites. There is a, um, a restroom there, and, uh, there is a shower there. Uh, but it's all primitive camping. There's no hookups for electricity or any of that thing. Like if someone wanted to bring a, a camper down there, they wouldn't be able to do that. It's all tent-type camping.
So I, so our man who oversees, is one of the, who make the, uh, I mean, as the fourth or whatever, what you said, he's the one to go out and say, well, you, you been here, uh, and collects the money, and he takes the money, return, give it to somebody at the county, if that works?
Right. They collect, he does collect the money, and then it comes into, um, the finance office and finance deposits. It takes care of the receipts and, uh, you know, takes care of the accounting.
Some, I'm glad we had it in place, because the few towns I've been over there was at wheel. In other words, you could put some in the little things if you wanted to, but you just didn't, you didn't, you didn't necessarily have to.
Right.
Or it's just that, uh, do we know who's all at the campsite? In other words, you know, typically, you know, it could be all kinds of people at the campsite, and we know we had a couple of drownings, I think. I know we had two drownings, maybe this year. And, um, so who, so the gym, he oversees, oversees people going too close to the, or in danger of, like, swimming in summertime, typically in summertime. They go in there, people get hot from town or wherever. They go there and take a dump, I mean, take a swim, and, and jump in one of the, um, you know, swim, I guess, the river, and get drowned. So do we have anybody warning people? I've, I've seen a few signs. And so, you know, it's, it's, it's their concern, their concern is men also. I think we need to somehow know, know maybe who are camping at those sites, whether it are five, ten, or fifteen dollars a day.
We, we do have some signage up. There is no, there are no lifeguard, but we do have some signage up advising people that they're swimming at their own risk. Um, that is a, I mean, it's a, it's a river, it's a wild river. There are, um, trees and whatnot that float down the river, and people can get caught in there, so, um...
You're right.
You know, people do have to take some responsibility, because we can't provide...
You're right. You, and you have to be right. And I think until we figure out, have a plan of some kind of oversight of telling people, I don't like going to people's funerals, and you said we had a sign, and we told them. I think we should take more of a, of, of trying to prevent into the measure rather than just, you know, just saying, we got a sign there, and you, and you ain't got killed. And I know we forget the families on TV, when they were saying, it was two families. It was family of the young man and the young boy who got killed, and there was another family. So, you know, they need to close down, because it's just, it's denying of, uh, somewhat of protection that we think that the county should be giving, you know, allowing people to go in there. That was all.
Well, um, we do also lock the parking lot up, um, with the times when we're not there. Um, there's a gate across there. I mean, unfortunately, people still go across around through the gate, but, um, but we do try to secure that as best we can, but it's pretty open down through there.
One last, since you brought it up again, one more, one more question. What can we do as a county, since we, uh, since we, we are funded to a certain extent to put in place to try to prevent some of those people, uh, going in and swimming? In most cases, drowning, I think it's been about every year, just somebody goes down and get drowned.
I mean, I, I know, probably the only thing that would convince people not to go in there when they're not supposed to would be if they were arrested for trespass. Um, but that's a kind of a difficult thing to do. I don't know that we would really want to do.
I'd rather go to jail and put somebody in a body bag over them, take them to the morgue.
Brittany. So now, um, before we dig into the general fund, I do want to just show this part of the book. This shows all of the funding sources. So I think this is a really good tool as well, because you can dig into the county revenue sources based off the, um, classification. So you can go to taxes, license and permit, intergovernmental revenues, charges for services, fines and forfeitures, investment income, um, contributions and donations, miscellaneous reven, revenue and other financing sources. So I think this is, um, this is a good tool for people to really dig in and see where the sources of revenue are for the county. So I just wanted to briefly hit on that before we really dig into the general fund. So as mentioned before, the, the budget for the general fund this year is seventy-eight-point-one million dollars, which is a two-point-five percent increase over the prior year budget. which is a two-point-five percent increase over the prior year budget. So this breakdown shows our revenue sources. So the revenue sources for the general fund come in at eighty-six point one percent, which is taxes. And then, five point nine percent is charges for services. Two point four percent is other financing sources. Two point one percent is intergovernmental revenue. One point seven percent is license and permit. One percent is fine and forfeitures and point eight percent is miscellaneous revenues. So the breakdown for that can be found here. So all of the taxes are lumped into a taxing column. And so you can see that comes out to, um, sixty-seven point two million for all the taxes. And then the license and permits comes out to one point three. Intergovernmental revenues, this is where a lot of the, um, grants come in, so there's a lot of projects tied there. One point six million, charges for services, which is your court fees, your, um, special, sheriff's special services fees, your inmate medical, prisoner, animal shelter fees, things like that come in here. And though, that comes out to four point five million. Fines and forfeitures are, just what that says, fines and forfeitures per the court system. So the total for that is seven hundred fifty thousand five hundred. The investment income, um, we did drop that pretty significantly this year, 'cause interest rates are so low. So that dropped to fifty thousand this year. Contributions and donations, that was budgeted at thirty-six point three, or thirty-six thousand three hundred. And the miscellaneous revenues, which are pretty much all the rest of the revenues that don't fit into any of the other categories, is six hundred and twenty-nine thousand three hundred and forty. And then our other financing sources, which are generally sale of assets and transfers in from other funds, which the only transfer in from other funds that we do do in the general fund is the transfer in from the, the, um, two-seventy-one, which is the fire district tax. So the transfer in from there is one million eight hundred and sixty-four thousand.
Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'm sorry to interrupt you again. Where, where's the, uh, the Staten Springs, the last sale? Where's that, where are those funds located in this?
Are you talking about the two point six? That actually, um, since we've already received that, that's in the twenty-twenty-one budget.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. We'll, um, dive into the expenditures now. So as you can see, most of the expenditures by function, which in the chart of accounts, you have functions, so you lump all public safety together, general government together, judicial together, and so forth. So the largest expenditure in the general fund budget is pub- public safety at fifty-two percent. Then your next is your general government budget, which is departments like your BOC, your finance, your IT department, GIS. This is page forty-four of your budget book, by the way, if you're looking for this. And your judicial is your court system, so they're all lumped together. They're nine point seven percent of the budget. Your public works is seven point three percent. Other financing uses, which is, um, any transfers out to other funds we do or appropriations, they're all lumped into this category and that's five point four percent. Culture and recreation is three point two percent. Housing and development is one point eight percent. Debt services, one point three percent, and health and welfare is one point two percent. So if you come further down to this chart of accounts, you can see what falls under general government. So general government is these departments. So this is also gonna be our breakdown for all the departments for the FY twenty-twenty-two budget. So we will spend some time going over this. And this is on page forty-five of your book. So the, um, non-departmental is where we budget things, such as our contingency is budgeted there. Our, um, other employee bonuses are also budgeted there, so that's generally where, um, that's generally what's budgeted in that department. So our contingency fiscal year changes and our contingency for the proposed personnel changes that we discussed at the beginning. So those are gonna be what makes up your non-departmental. The BOC budget is at two million ninety-nine three sixty-five this year. The elections budget, I'm gonna have to look over here, hold on, I need to get my microphone, 'cause I cannot read that. Seven oh-three five seventy-two. The financial administration is nine fifty-seven, seven forty-seven. The data processing, which is the IT department, nine fifty-two five seventy-nine. GIS is three seventy-five four eighty-eight. Human resources is six forty-eight thirty-three. The tax commissioner is one million two hundred and forty-nine thousand eighty-two dollars. The tax assessor's office is one million fifty thousand two oh-seven. Board of Equalization is fifty-nine six eighty-nine. Risk management is one million eight hundred and twenty thousand. And government buildings and facilities is one million three hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine. So those departments make up your general government departments. Scrolling down to the judicial category, we've got our superior court budget at one million one hundred and four thousand four thirty. Our clerk of courts budget, which is one million five hundred and forty-four thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars. The district attorney budget is two million one thousand six hundred and thirty-seven. The magistrate court budget is four hundred and nineteen thousand thirty-eight dollars. The probate court budget is seven thirty-nine two thirty-one. And the juvenile court budget is one million one hundred and thirty-eight thousand two hundred and thirty-two. And public defender is five hundred and ninety-nine five thirty-seven. The next category is public safety. So here in public safety, you'll find the sheriff's office and the sheriff oversees the sheriff's office budget, the east side precinct budget, the west side precinct budget, the jail operations, and the student resource officers. So the sheriff's budget this year is fifteen million five hundred and forty-three eight ninety-seven. The west side precinct budget is one hundred and fifty-four thousand seven thirty-six. The east side precinct budget is twenty-three thousand nine eighteen. The jail operations budget is twelve million eight thirty-eight eight twelve. And the student resource officer budget is one million three hundred and seventy-four thousand one ninety-five. So the county fire services oversees two budgets. So you have your general county fire service and you have your fire training budget as well. So the county fire service budget is nine million seven hundred and forty-three thousand five forty. And the fire training budget is one hundred and seventeen thousand seven fourteen. The next, um, department that falls under public safety is the coroner. And that budget this year is one fourteen three seventy-nine. And then animal services, nine ten seven fifty-five. And your EMA, which is three ninety-four oh forty-nine. So that makes up the public safety.
Um, Commissioner Edwards? Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So Brittany, refresh my memory on the school resource officer, that's reimbursed by the Board of Education, correct?
Yes, so, um, not quite one hundred percent. Close, but not. Um, and I have not heard an updated number if that's number, generally the number changes the revenue, um, 'cause there's a contract and haven't heard of the new contract amount for next year.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner Sanders? My concern is, what did we change from the preliminary budget? That's what I'm interested in. I, I love this, this is great. Thank you so much for the, so, layout. But what was changed? Was there any changes or was it the exact same preliminary, as the preliminary budget?
Overall, the preliminary budget at the first budget workshop was around, it wasn't quite eighty million, it was seventy-nine. I think it was seventy-nine point eight or seventy-nine point six. This new budget is seventy-eight point one, so we did do a reduction. A big chunk of that is capital. So we had budgeted two point six in the capital improvement transfer in the general fund. So tonight, the budget amendment that will be coming to the board is to try, is to, um, for us to try to do those transfers in twenty-one instead of twenty-two, which helped us to be able to reduce our expenditures, therefore we were able to reduce our revenues. And that is made possible by the two point six million dollar check that we received from the JDA.
Now, do you have a list of, in reference to the non-departmental departments? Were there any changes made to them or did it stay the same? 'Cause I know this actually outlines the amount, but it doesn't break down the specifics of what is included in that amount. So I think that would be a lot more interesting to the public and be, to be more detailed, so they know exactly what's included in nine hundred thousand dollars.
So if you dive into the department, which I didn't dive into department by department, since we only have an hour, I didn't think there was gonna be enough time to do that. Um, but the department budget detail can be found under each department. So this is non-departmental, so you can see the spreadsheet. That's line-by-line details right here for everything in every department.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, see. Um, question that, that I have, and, and, uh, we were talking about, uh, you talked, you touched a little bit on, about the, um, uh, school resource officer. And you, and you said that, um, most of the, all of it, I guess, I guess I thought, said ninety-eight percent of the money, or ninety-seven, or ninety-five percent of the money is paid for by the schools. So do we put money up to count, do, does we budget money for them and then they reimburse it back to us? And if they reimburse it back to us, where does it go? Where does that money go?
So in the student resource officer budget, there's a revenue that's a intergovernmental revenue from the school board. So it goes back directly to that department. Generally, we try to keep that about the same, where the contract amount is the budgeted amount. But I think this year it's slightly, last year it was slightly a little bit more, and then this year it's slightly a little bit more.
So is that a, this, is that money a total in, in the budget? I think you said something about seventy-nine million. Is it part of that total of money that, um, that we have budgeted?
Yes, that is part of the budgeted amount of the seventy-eight, I think it's the seventy-eight point one, and it is part of that.
So, um, one other thing, you know, I'm far from going back. You said there was, uh, two point five million that we got from over at JDA. Um, you said that we had two point five million. So I guess the question is, how'd that go in this budget? 'Cause you just said, you just said something like, some of it may be in this budget, then you said in the twenty-twenty-two budget.
So the current, and this all depends on whether this budget amendment's approved tonight. So this current proposed budget in front of you is going off the assumption that this budget amendment is gonna be approved tonight. So there, the capital improvement fund is showing a, if you look in the revenues under the capital improvement fund, I'll pull that up. There's gonna be a line that says use of prior year funds. So that two million dollars is a use of prior year funds, 'cause the capital funds are multi-year funds. So you're able to utilize, the general fund, you pretty much have that money to use in that fiscal year only, and then once that fiscal year's over, that money is, is no longer available. Capital funds are multi-year funds, so once the, the money's in the capital improvement fund, it can be utilized for multiple years. So that's what this budget's doing. It's showing you a revenue of two million from other financing sources, which under the financing sources is going to be a line called, um, use of prior year funds.
So I, I guess, I guess my question is to the Lord, is that how are we gonna use that money to kinda ease some of the tax burdens on the citizens of Nuneen County from the taxes? I mean, I thought that one of the main reasons, and somebody helped me, maybe I was listening to the wrong information, that this, that money was gonna be used to, to make sure that the taxes weren't as much as they would have been had we not received that, those monies. And what type of reduction in taxes are the citizens in county gonna have?
Well, by utilizing the funding in the capital improvements fund, then we'll be able to reduce the budget by that same amount, because these are projects that we need to do. Um, so we won't have to have as much tax dollars to support the general fund. Uh, we'll have two point six million less general fund tax dollars to support that, so, um, so that's how, that's the save, that's part of the savings there.
So, so how do we show the citizens in Nuneen County that, that money is reduced via taxes? How can we show them that?
Well, what we'll, we would be showing them is the, the projects that, that would be done with, with that money and this explanation that, simply the explanation that we have here, or that Brittany, you just gave you. I mean, we could certainly add a note to the, um, to this, uh, to the budget book explaining, you know, explaining that, that's how we reduced the general fund, uh, budget requirement.
Well, uh, thank you. Just one last quick question, or I guess, uh, comment, what do you wanna call it? Why can't we take the two, two point five million? And say, if, if the tax burden from the county said was, say, eight million, you subtract that two point five from the eight million, reduce it from the taxes, I mean, it seemed to be complicated, and I don't see where it should. I think it should be simple. Just take two and a half, two, two million and a half, subtract that from the tax burden of the citizens in county, and there will be a reduction, and you would see it. It is my, my math, my math probably is, is the wrong kind of math.
Well, I wish it was that easy too, but sometimes, you know, the accounting boards and the states require us to account for things a certain way. Um, but to kinda circle back to how can we show there's gonna be a reduction? The original budget that was brought back in April to the workshops was right at eighty million seventy, seventy-nine point eight. So now you're seeing a budget of seventy-eight point one million. So that, right there is an example of how we can show taxpayers that this two point six has come in and helped to alleviate some of the tax burden off of them. Because we have reduced our budget from what it originally was in April.
Thank you, Brittany.
Give me just a second, let me get back over to the page.
Um, Commissioner Sanders?
Lord, we, um, you and I discussed about a communication fund for the commissioners. Um, just explain what, Lord, and our conversation was, um, there is nothing in place for the commissioners to reach out to their constituents. We either come out of pocket, uh, we pay for those services ourselves as part-time employees. Um, as I mentioned to you, that other counties have funding in place for their commissioners to reach their constituents. Have you put something in place for each commissioner that can at least once or twice a year send out a notification? Because we're not allowed to use the county, uh, Facebook page. So is there something in place for commissioners to be able to communicate to their constituents?
I have not, but I wanted to hear from the commissioners of what you thought might be an appropriate amount. I mean, it's now the time to discuss it. If you needed whatever amount you needed, and then we could make an adjustment in the BOC budget to cover what that amount might be, I think, and then be able to do that.
Did I need to explain it to anybody, or you kinda understood what I was missing? Let me explain again, okay. Lloyd and I had a discussion, I was telling him that in other counties, of course, other counties- Lloyd and I had a discussion, I was telling him that in other counties, of course, other counties are larger, they have cheap staffs that actually do certain things for them to be able to reach the constituents. Um, maybe, I don't know, maybe I'm the most technical one, I don't know. But there is no fund put in place, or anything put in place for the commissioner to be able to reach their constituents, to send out notifications. Everyone in the county is not on Facebook, everyone is not technologically savvy. So there has to be a way to reach them. I know we have a Facebook page, but I was told that commissioners are not allowed to post their events or anything on that. So in regards to that, that puts it on the commissioner's pocket to be able to reach their constituent. So I was asking Lloyd, is there something, can be something in place? Um, he did act me on that, I said maybe about a three thousand or two thousand per commissioner to be able to reach their constituent a year, and to be able to send out a notification. And it, it's just a figure thrown out there, it could be less than that, I was, we just were throwing things out. But just something to do that, because we are growing as a county. We're not that county where it was ninety thousand or eighty thousand people. Technology has changed over the years, and there has to be some way to reach those people who are on technology and those who are not on technology.
Just, let me see, yeah, I agree with it. Um, I think the uh, three thousand dollars per commissioner is a, a good amount. In, in lieu of, of the monies that we're already spending on stuff that we shouldn't be spending it on. And to keep this brief, if you want to know, just catch me if you need, I, I'll probably get you a full.
Anyone else want to come in? Um, Commissioner Calvin.
Okay, I'm not, um, wait, I'm taking a, taking a Y V three. Savvy, okay. Um, a lot of things that I put into campaigning and everything else, it's just, it just comes out of my own money because it's, it's an opportunity to serve. And I just hate to, um, throw that out for taxpayers to pay my way to communicate with them. Believe me, they find me, and they'll call me if they have a question. So um, um, I, I'm not sure I really too keen on that. I, I didn't really have to think that through, and I'm, like I said, I'm not technologically savvy. Uh, I don't use Facebook, uh, I just, uh, it's just not me. So y'all can do what you want to do, I'm just not. Well, hey, I mean, y'all do what you want to do, but I'm just, I'm not for that. I just, we're probably both against that. Thank you.
Let me correct that, this has nothing to do with the campaign, this is during our term. Um, a lot of my constituents reach out to me and say, I'm not on Facebook, so I don't get the information. This is for those who are not on technology to be able to receive the information. So I get those calls, if you want me to send those over to you, I get them all the time. They say, I didn't know about that, I didn't know what was going on. So it's just a way to reach them, because the county doesn't send them anything, so I, I don't know. I guess it's up to us, I'm just believing, communicating to the citizens. This is not new, it's done in every county, other counties outside of us. They do it in Rockdale, they do it in DeKalb, so it's not something new. And we just have to be open for change, we're growing. We have to go into the twenty-first century, we're still using communication that's antiquated. We have to grow.
Uh, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I am utilize technology a lot, so um, I, I do see where that could be an issue. Um, Lloyd, I don't know if it's a possibility where, because I basically utilize my own funds to do that. Um, even when I have Zoom meetings, I use my own, I pay for my own account every single month. Um, maybe is there a way that, um, we can look at these other counties that are doing that to kind of see how they're doing it, um, and research that, and to see like what funding source they utilize to do that, to see if we're able to mirror it to an extent. So maybe we can do just some additional research to find out how other counties are implementing that for their commissioners, if that's something that we can incorporate.
I would guess they're probably using the general fund to provide the source of funding for it. So I don't know that, I mean, I, I don't think that would be an issue for us. I think really where we kind of are with it would be, one, the question is whether or not the board members would like to have that resource. And then, two, at what amount would you, do you think would be appropriate for y'all? So, um, and, and I, I think we would be able to fund that. I mean, if we're looking at, uh, two thousand dollars or so, uh, two to three thousand dollars, um, I feel certain that we could make some adjustments in order to, to provide that. Um, but again, it's, it's a, the question would be, you know, whether or not you want to use that or need that resource. Um, Commissioner Callen may not need that resource, so we wouldn't need the budget for him. Um, but the, and likewise, maybe some of the other commissioners may not need that resource, so we, we wouldn't necessarily have to make it available to them, or budget for them unless that they come across something. So, um, and really, all I would need at this point would be, uh, some kind of a consensus on whether, on whether to move ahead with trying to fund that, and then at, at what level.
I was going to say too, I, I do have some constituents that, uh, have expressed to me that because they're not on social media, uh, there sometimes are some things that they don't get. Uh, so I have heard that as well. Um, and so I've, I've basically tried to, here recently, just tried to figure out how I can personally go about making them aware, um, of doing that, so that they can get the information. Um, I know one of the ways that I have started, um, trying to close that communication gap is really being in communication with my homeowners associations, um, on a continual basis, and allowing them to distribute information. So I'll distribute it to them, and then they'll distribute that information out to their homeowners. But of course, everybody doesn't live in a homeowners association. So for those that don't live in a homeowners association, I've been trying to figure out, how do we reach, uh, them as well? Um, one citizen suggested maybe putting up signs around the county, uh, when certain things come up. I know that's an expense, so I would have to look at, you know, my personal budget to say, is that something that I can basically afford for myself to be able to put signs around when certain things are going on for those that aren't, or don't utilize social media, or don't check their emails often? So I don't know if I per se would have a figure tonight, um, but I, I think maybe that's something that we can further discuss to kind of see how we can go about that. And that it's not going to be, it's something that we can put in our current budget, and it's not going to allow us to, uh, increase, um, the expenses on our citizens just to do that. So I would want to find a way where we can do it without, um, throwing that cost at the citizens to do.
I, I think what we would do would be to take a look at those line items in the B O C budget to see if we could pull a little bit from the various line items. Um, and then maybe make up whatever difference there might be with, to pull a little bit out of the contingency to make up that difference. Um, so we do have some options at this point, depends on how large it.
Yeah, we are, um, past seven o'clock, so Lloyd, you want to kind of wind us down so we can move into our regular scheduled meeting, please?
Well, I think we've got, I know we didn't get all the way through this on the expenses, but, um, the, the budget, uh, is available. I want to have Brittany go to the, um, so you can see where it is in the, um, go back to the website. So this is available, if you need to go to the transparency page. And it may take a minute for it to come up with what we need. Yeah, there you go. Um, and then drop down there, you'll see twenty-two budget book. Click on that, and it'll take you to the, uh, to the budget book, and you can go work your way through that, um, and, um, y'all, you know, dive in as deep as you'd like on that. Um, and I think you'll find it pretty easy to read, um, and easy to, to get any information, uh, that you need. Uh, and the next, um, budget meeting that we have is next Tuesday, at, at six. Um, that will be our first, first public hearing, so the public will have an opportunity to comment on the budget. Uh, the second budget meeting will be the following week, uh, and that will be, uh, on the fifteenth. And, um, that will be also at six o'clock, I believe, correct? Six o'clock. Uh, once a budget is adopted, um, we'll have the information. Then our next step in the process is to adopt the military, um, and that will most likely be in, hopefully they'll have everything completed in July, so we can adopt the military. We'd like to be able to adopt the budget, uh, by, uh, June, obviously by June thirty. Thank you.
Thank you. God's sake, a motion that will adjourn. A motion by Commissioner Edwards, respected by Commissioner, uh, Mason, all in favor? Stand adjourned.